Welcome to the City of Pinellas Park's City Council Meeting. Our city offers superior parks, premium recreational services, exceptional public safety resources, optimal investment opportunities, and more. Our mayor and city council welcomes you to tonight's meeting.
It is August 28, 2022. We're calling to order our city council meeting. And our invocation this evening will be delivered by Mike Willsbach of Calvary Chapel. Please rise if you wish.
Good evening. Let's pray. So Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you first and foremost for the city and its leaders that you've placed in our community. While we pray for your blessing over Mayor Bradbury and our council members tonight, Father, grant them your wisdom and your strength to make right decisions for our communities, our community in your eyes, Lord. And bless the agenda for this evening that all that happens here would be within your will and bring you glory over all. And Father, as always, bless and protect our firefighters and our police officers. And we thank you for your presence in this place tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. And all of those people said, "Amen."
the best part of the evening, when we get to honor our city staff for all their dedicated service, as well as some of our community partners. And this evening, it is my pleasure to invite the Deaf Awareness Group here of Pinellas County up for a proclamation. Come on, guys. Whereas, Deaf Awareness Week was first celebrated with the World Federation of Deaf in 1958. This event is also known as International Week of Death, commemorating the first Congress of the World Federation of Deaf, which took place on September of 1951. And whereas, at least 14,000 deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals reside here in Pinellas County. And whereas, community benefits from the many contributions of the deaf and hard-of-hearing in our community. Whereas, the purpose of the Deaf Awareness Month is to increase public awareness of the issues and the culture of the people who are deaf or hard-of-hearing. The event is an opportunity to promote equal access to information and services for deaf individuals and to educate the public about the misconceptions of being deaf. Now therefore, I Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September of 2025 as Deaf Awareness Month. And witness, I set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on the 28th day of August of 2025. And we have, as you can see, wonderful support in our community. And I would like to give this to you on behalf of the city council, and also hand the mic over so that you can tell us, which I already know, about some of the wonderful things that you guys are doing in our community.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We are so fortunate and blessed to be able to support and serve the Pinellas County Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Community through the Family Center on Deafness. And we have had the wonderful fortune and blessing to have such great support from Pinellas Park. Really, working with Bart and so many of you over the last few years has really helped Family Center on Deafness become more mainstreamed and allowing us to serve more families. Without your support, we would not be here today. We are so humbled and honored for this opportunity. We are so grateful for the recognition of the great community that we serve. And we look forward to continuing to serve our community and increasing the deaf and hard-of-hearing population within Pinellas County. So, thank you, madam.
Thank you.
How y'all doing this evening? CJ Huffman, Local 2193, Union President. As you can see, the IFF Local designed a couple shirts in partnership with the City of Pinellas Park, just to bring different, you know, a different level of awareness to the community for deaf, the Deaf Awareness Month of September. So, we're just extremely honored to be in this partnership with you. We really do appreciate and are very humbled to be wearing these shirts both on and off duty to raise awareness throughout the months of September. And thank you to our chiefs. It's also going to be through October and November as well, so.
Hold on, you gotta get mom up there. Board member, school teacher.
And we also need to give a big shout out to Ms. Patty Reed, our councilwoman. She knows a little sign language, so she has been a part of the community for many And continuing with the fun of the evening, can I have Mr. Ryan up here, please? Just checking. This is Ryan, and his career began with the City of Pinellas Park in July of 2015 and Public Works as a storm water maintenance operator, and was promoted to Senior Storm Water Operations in less than a year. And in 2018, he was promoted to Construction Service as an Engineering Inspector, a position that he held for four years. During that time, he was the Inspector of the Gateway Express Project. Ryan's role for Utility Service Coordinator began in 2022. He has the responsibility of developing and managing utility CIPs for the concepts and construction throughout the community and everything in between, the community from one end to the other. And in 2025 alone, he has managed 22 capital improvement programs valued at $28 million. Outside of work, Ryan resides in Pinellas Park with his wife Megan for nearly 15 years. They have two sons, Peyton and Parker. Ryan enjoys being a father and instilling a matching work ethic with them as well. Ryan enjoys grilling for large gatherings, football, and his barbecue competitions, and is the center of attention when he's got the grill going. He is also a self-labeled gamer nerd and karaoke guru. Please enjoy me on congratulating Ryan on 10 years of dedicated service with the city. And I whispered to him that it better not be just 10 years, it better be lots more. We present the Certificate of Award in appreciation and recognition of 10 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 27th day of July of 2025. So, thank you. And I also have, for when you have on your nice suits, a nice 10-year service pin. So, yeah. I know you've got work-family and family-family here with you tonight, so come on up, guys. Yes, absolutely. There's a crew out there. Matt joined us also in July of 2015 as a Pension and Risk Management Director, playing a key role in safeguarding our city's financial assets and the employees' well-being. With a strong education background that includes an MBA in Finance, Matt has continuously pursued professional development. His impressive credentials include an Associate's in Risk Management, a Florida Certified Labor Relations Professional, and a Certified Public Pension Trustee. In addition to his prime duties, Matt serves as the Chair of the City's Safety Committee, is our dedicated ADA Coordinator, and a Police Pension Board Trustee. He is also a valued member of the City's 457 Investment Committee. He was essential in the city receiving an esteemed partnership award from the Florida League of Cities. In his personal life, Matt is a dedicated husband and father to two bright children. With this background, I would say yes. Please join me in congratulating Matt on 10 years of dedicated service to the City We present the Certificate of Award to Matt Pruitt in appreciation and recognition for 10 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 29th day of July of 2025. So, thank you very much. And here is your 10-year award as well. Yes, and the work-family, come on up. I saw several of them arranging to sit all together and everything. And Mr. Matt, too. That shows dedication with the parents and their team and their family. Next one is Mr. John Repoza. That is fine. John began his construction career in the 1980s, working alongside his father. He enrolled in a carpentry course at New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School in 1986, before continuing his work in Massachusetts. He moved to Florida, so that tells you he was in the right direction. And in 1990, he moved to St. Pete and worked with Ken Fisher Construction on custom homes and commercial projects. And in 1998, he became a Florida Certified Building Contractor, focusing on remodeling and commercial build-outs. And from 2010 to 2015, he managed framing crews for Ken Fisher Construction and Monogram's Homes. John joined the City of Pinellas Park in July of 2015 as a Building Inspector and Plans Examiner. In the summer of 2025, he achieved his Certified Building Official status and was promoted to Assistant Building Official for the City of Pinellas Park. And we want to congratulate John on 10 years of dedicated service to the City of Pinellas Park. Look like you still got several more years left in you for us. We appreciate that. We present the Certificate of Award to John M. Reposo in appreciation and recognition of 10 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 13th day of July of 2025. And we have your 10-year lapel service pin as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You will always see him laughing, smiling, and even dancing his way around the city. During Halloween programs, you can see him as Mr. Clean or as Pitbull. He makes his appearances all over the city. Randy always goes above and beyond, not only in his work, but in his connections. He and his fellow, his connections with his fellow employees. He received numerous Stargram Awards from his coworkers, and as always, he goes above and beyond with a great attitude. Outside the city, you can see Randy working you can see Randy working at Bucks Games, Lightning Games, and at the arena as security. And you can also see him jamming out with the customers during the concerts. Randy has an amazing family behind him, including his wife Lori of 37 years and his two daughters Erica and Rachel. Please join me in congratulating Randy on 10 years of dedicated service to the city of Pinellas Park. We present the certificate of award to Randy Randall D. White in appreciation and recognition of 10 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 19th day of August of 2025. And your 10-year service lapel. And we'll take a picture, and then we need to get your wife. And work family, too. Ms. Tammy Peterson. This is Ms. Tammy Peterson. During Tammy's 15 years of dedicated service, she has built a career centered on creating meaningful recreational opportunities for all ages. Over the years, Tammy has managed several key facilities, including Forbes Rec Center, the Senior Center, Broadrick Rec Center, and now she is at the Patty Johnson Agricultural Farm. Tammy and the Ag Farm team have recently been awarded the Innovation Program Environmental Resilience Award from the Florida Recreation and Park Association. This honor reflects Tammy's dedication to the farm and to offering impactful programs that meet the evolving needs of our community. Please congr, help me congratulate Tammy on 15 years of dedicated service to the city of Pinellas Park, and hopefully several more to come. You're making it beam over there. We present the certificate of award to Tammy Peterson in appreciation and recognition of 15 years of continu, continuous loyal service as of the 19th day of July of 2025. So, thank you. And here is your 15-year lapel pin from the city. Thank you. And we've got city family up here. And one of our best, for the last, Ms. Joy Rebels. This is Ms. Joy Rebels. Joy is married to her soulmate and best friend, Mr. Richard Rebels, who is a Pinellas Park police officer. He will be retiring in January of 2025, after 25 years of, or 2026, after 25 years of service. Sorry. Joy has a degree in business administration with a minor in criminal justice. She started her career in law enforcement in 1992 in Long Beach, Mississippi, as a dispatcher and reserve officer. Joy was hired here in 2000 by the Pinellas Park Police Department as a dispatcher. During her time, she became the dispatcher training officer, tactical and SWAT dispatcher, and shift supervisor. And in 2023, she moved to our community development department as a planning specialist. Joy has a beautiful daughter, Brianna, who is an elementary school teacher in South Carolina. Joy and Richard also have three rescue pit bulls, Raven, Reagan, and Deuce. Please help, please help me in congratulating Joy on 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Pinellas Park. We present this plaque to Joy H. Rebels in appreciation and recognition of 25 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 9th day of August of 2025. And we have a 25-year service award pin here for you. And now if we can have hubby up here along with the rest of the work family. Now moving on to the stuff that isn't as fun. At this time, we do always open it up to citizens who would like to come up and ask questions of city council or staff on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. The first person that I have is Mildred Hood from the Toastmasters.
Can you take the other panel?
Yes, sir.
She'll be right back.
Not a problem. It was kind of long. The next that did fill out a card to speak is Ms. Sharon Zimrig. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Zimring, and it's 8130 66th Street North in Pinellas Park. So, I've been here before, and I'm here just to shine a light on the council so, on a subject that's dear to my pocketbook and my heart. So, this is about the water increases. And I've worked really hard with your utility manager, Don Vaughn. He's been very generous with listening to my moaning and bemoaning and groaning and concerns over the increases in the water. You know, I never mind paying for what I get. I'll pay, I'll buy whatever I need to buy, and I'll pay the going rate. But I resent paying for things that I'm not using. So, as I said once before when I was here, I measure my water every week. I go out on 66th Street on my hands and knees and look at my water meter, and I document it. And when my bill comes, I know that I'm right there on the nickel. So, all of a sudden now, this city council has decided they need new water meters and that they need some new equipment and that they're going to go back to the small business owner. I own a 12-unit professional office center. 12, well, there are 12 units. I actually have six units, basically. But anyway, so now there were, I've been used to paying for my water around, around 60, whatever, let's go 60,000 units. Now they want to charge me for 21,000 units. So, that's a lot. That's a 400 and like 30% increase. But we've worked, we're working on this project. In the meantime, I want, you know, I want to do the right thing for, I mean, no choice. We're going to pay for the water, but why do we pay for water we're not using? So, I may put a new sprinkler system in. I'm gonna, don't care if my toilets overflow. I mean, because I'm paying for a lot of water that I'm not using because I know how much water I use. So, in the meantime, in addition to all of that, you know, all of that said and done, I would just to remind you that the economy is in trouble. We, we are struggling in a community where we suffered from a storm last year. And I have, like, I have seven tenants. And I can see, one of them gave notice this week. They cannot pay their rent. They're not, they're psychologists. They work at a hospital during the week, but they kept office hours for after, for after work to see private patients. But people aren't coming to pay for that out of their pockets. So, they can't pay their rent, and they're going to be leaving me this month. But I'm going to be paying for a lot of, for full amount of water in that unit. And I may fill it, and I may not fill it right away because there are not a lot of people who need office space. And I don't have anything in there other than a little sink with one cold water spout and a little toilet and like 800 square feet of office space. So, you know, I can't say that I'm going to fill that right away. And I have two other tenants in that building. And they, I can see the writing on the wall. One, one is a, like a massage therapist. She, her people aren't coming. We're not going for those luxury items that we did for a while. Last couple of years ago, they had one little unit. Then they expanded for two, and they did really well. But I was there this week. It is, the place is empty. That parking lot is empty. How long are they going to stay? I'm going to be paying for water that, again, I'm not using. So, I, you know, there was, and I have, my husband built this 43 years ago. So, we've been through the water cycle with the city of Pinellas Park. And, you know, there was a time when you filled out a card. If you had, if you didn't have tenants that, you know, for that period of time, you didn't pay. So, there were ways to work with it. I'm just so afraid with this new system. They're going to lock it in, and then I'm going to get stuck with a big water bill. And, and then there's going to be any room for when your tenants leave. And you're, at some point, you just have to give it up, sell the building, tear it down, and it could look like Missouri Avenue in Clearwater. So, in the meantime, that's just, I just wanted to shine a light on that. I wanted to share that with you. And I know in next month, we're going to have another meeting about more water increases. So, even if I settle on a water rate right now, they're going to come back next month and give me another water rate increase. Just be generous. Know that the economy, thank you, is in trouble and that, you know, things are going south in the, in our, in our world today, you know, as far as being, having frivolous money to do this with. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Sharon, just one second. Mayor, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. I just wanted a point of clarification, you know, and I'm sure staff shared this with you, but we purchase our water from Pinellas County. So, we have to also make ourselves whole. And I think that's an important piece of the puzzle. And this is before me, but I think, you know, perhaps the can was kicked down the road on passing those water rate increases. But, you know, it's, it's the reality of it because we have to pay for the water. And if it's water you're not using or whoever's using it, somebody, we're still paying for it.
Why should I pay for it if I'm not using it? Everybody should share love.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. And I think a lot of these increases are sharing love because we've been sending out letters and staff's been working diligently with folks for a while on this. And there's only been one person so far that's come to speak about it. And it's you, and I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, because it hurts me.
It hurts everybody. And when you talk about the economy, it's also important to remember the local government is not immune from those costs and other things increasing. I mean, we've got vehicles that we paid for a year ago. The cost has increased 400%. And so, it's just, I just want you to understand, this is not, you know, city council saying, hey, we want to do this. But we have a responsibility to taxpayers and everybody to make sure that we are making ourselves whole because this is not a money-making situation for us.
So, raise the rate for the water. Whatever water costs, split it, split it out between people who use it and charge it for what they use. That's what the power company does. You use a lot of power, they charge you a lot of money for your power. You use a little power, they charge you less. You get solar, you know, you.
I don't know if Duke Energy is the best example for that one right now.
Maybe not. But they raise their rates anyway. But you're right.
But just.
I just want to pay for what I use.
I understand.
Fair rate, a fair rate.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I have a question for you. How many units do you have?
I have, originally I have 12 units, but some are now, they're, they've grown. I have like one tenant may have three units. And I have one tenant has two units. I have another tenant that has three units. So, rather than having 12, I really have like maybe seven.
Does each unit have a restroom?
Um, yes. But that doesn't mean, one unit is just a storage room. And I have another unit that has one restroom. They have one, one person there. I have another unit that has three units, but they are only open three days a week for two hours in the morning or two hours, three hours in the afternoon. You know, so they're not there all the time. And it's not like they, they have nine to five, and they're using them.
Understood, but you may want to look at how maybe you could revamp your building.
Well, you know, I could maybe, I could do that. Well, that's a possibility, too. But right now, people are talking about leaving. I'm losing tenants. So, I'm going to, you know, and then people don't need that kind of space anymore. Hard to find, fill those spaces. So, you know, I've got, there are more, there's a lot of trouble ahead, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to fill that.
Donna, is she able to get on that, use that app? We don't have the electronic meter at her place of business.
No, not yet.
And I don't use, I already know how much water I use. I write it down on my phone. I know how much.
I'm just trying to keep you from getting on your knees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And now we will go back to the Toastmasters.
My name is Mildred Hood. My address is 5820 39th Street North. Good evening, mayor, city council members, and distinguished guests. I am proud to stand before you this evening on behalf of the speaking seat Toastmasters Club, number 4698, District 48, Area Number 11. The club has called Pinellas County, City of Pinellas Park, home since it was chartered back in September 1st, 1981. That's over four decades of continuous operation right here in your city, providing a safe, supportive environment where community members have grown their speaking skills, leadership, and communication skills as well. We come here first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you to you, City of Pinellas Park, for the decades of quiet support you have given our club, for being a place that welcomes learning, leadership, and professional growth. Because of that, countless individuals, your residents, your employees, your neighbors, have become more confident speakers, more thoughtful listeners, and stronger community leaders. Toastmaster might be a global organization, but our story is deeply local. Our members have come from your schools, your churches, small business, and yes, from within your city employees. They have brought those skills back into this community in reaching ways that sometimes are hard to measure but deeply felt. And so, as we celebrate our continued journey, we respectfully ask for you continued recognition and support. Whether it's through sharing information about our meetings, connecting seating department, city departments with training opportunities, or simply keeping open the doors for partnerships. Because when citizens find their voice, cities grow stronger. On behalf of Toastmasters Easy Toast, on behalf of our speakers, Speak Easy Toastmaster, thank you again for being the home and helping us empower voices since nineteen eighty-one. We look forward to many more years of building confidence, one speech at the time. And may I present this certificate to you?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I've, uh, heard of some of our city staff over the years participating in the Toastmasters as well as, um, just being out and about in the community. I've had, just as an example, a cashier at Walgreens that, um, knew who I was, knew, she had grown up in this community. And she was bragging about going to the Toastmasters to learn to get up in front of everybody and speak. And it just takes practice. I'm sure that all of us up here can tell you the same thing. You know, the very first time we got up to the podium out here and spoke, we were nervous. So, um, thank you and thank you for what you guys do in our community.
Is now also available in a virtual mode in case somebody cannot make it to the meeting.
Okay. Wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other citizens that would like to come up and speak this evening on any item that's not on the agenda before we get started on our agenda? Seeing none. We do not have any quasi judicial items this evening, so we will move on to Section Two, Approval of Minutes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion, we approve regular council minutes of August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, as on file in the city clerk's office.
Second.
Any discussion by city council on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are we using our little buttons down here?
We're trying.
Okay.
We can do a voice vote.
Okay, well, I'm gonna show everybody at home while we're getting it all started there. These are for our city council to push the voting for yea, nay. If we're absent, there's a button for somebody to push the word absent so that the city clerks have an accurate count. And at the same time, the citizens at home can see what we have voted on, since sometimes they can't hear us very well.
Push your button.
And there's a button to push. Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Section Three, our public hearings. Item P one, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item P one, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter eighteen, Land Development Code, amending Section eighteen dash eighteen oh one point one, general procedures for vacations of right-of-way or easements, amending Section eighteen dash eighteen oh one point two sub B, easements, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the code of the city of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a second and final reading, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two by title only, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P one, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two's, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing at this time and turning it over to Megan.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Megan Montesino, Development Review Manager. I will be presenting, um, an LDC amendment to amend, uh, Section eighteen dash eighteen oh one point one of the Land Development Code to amend general procedures for vacations of right-of-way or easements and Section eighteen dash eighteen oh one point two B of the Land Development Code to amend public hearing notice requirements for vacation of easements. Proposed changes for Section eighteen dash eighteen oh one point one, uh, the following under general procedures for vacations of rights-of-way or easements will be the following, remove the requirement of sending certified mail to all owners of abutting, uh, property, the right of, of the right-of-way or easements to be vacated. But just to clarify, neighboring properties will still be notified via regular public hearing notice mailers. Update the submittal process to an online application process, reference the new administrative fee schedule, and update the language for letters of no objections to state utility companies and government agencies instead of listing each individual company or agency. For Section eighteen dash eighteen oh one point two B, uh, public hearing notice requirements for vacation of easements, the language will reflect the following. The city shall place an advertisement in a newspaper of general circulation in the city and post a sign on the property where the easement is to be vacated and at the public right-of-way if the easement is within the site and not viewable from public, uh, right-of-way. On June fifth, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Does city council have any questions of Megan?
Just a quick one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, this is a, this is kinda like a cleanup kind of...
Right.
And I will ask a question, um, for the audience. When you're talking about sending out certified mail, we are still going to mail out items that's just not gonna be certified anymore to...
Correct, and it'll, it'll benefit, um, the, the applicant because they were the ones to pay for those certified mailers. So now they won't have to pay for the certified mailers, but we'll just send out regular mail.
So it'll still go out, it just won't go out certified anymore.
Correct.
Which does cost more for the applicant and it's also more time-consuming for the city staff as well.
Right.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at its second and final reading and entertain a motion by city council. Councilmember Sebel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two, public hearing, second and final reading.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item P two, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three.
This is item P two, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter eighteen, Land Development Code, amending Section eighteen dash one oh nine point two, certification forms for final plats, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the code of the city of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This has been a second and final reading, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three by title only, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P two, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three's, public hearing, second and final reading. I'm opening the public hearing and turning it over to Megan once again.
Hello again, my name is Megan Montesino, Development Review Manager. And I'll be presenting P two. The request is to amend Section eighteen dash one oh nine point two of the Land Development Code to add a requirement for certificate of approval of the surveyor and amend the language for certificate of conformity by surveyor. The proposed changes includes, uh, to add the requirement for certificate of approval of the surveyor. And below is, uh, the language that will be reflected in the code. And then amend the language for certificate of conformity by surveyor to state, I hereby certify the, uh, that pursuant to Chapter one seventy-seven point zero eight one one, Florida statutes. I have reviewed this plat and find it complies with the technical requirements of that chapter. However, my review does not include field verification of any of coordinates, points or measurements, or does verify the geometric data foreclosure shown on this plat. And that is direct language from our surveyor to be reflected in our code. On June fifth, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case. I'm here if you have any questions.
Does city council have any questions of Megan on this item? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion by city council. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion, we pass ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three, public hearing, second and final reading.
Second motion.
Motion has been made in second. And city council, cast your ballots, either yea or nay. Moving on to item P three, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-five.
This is item number P three, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, pertaining to comprehensive planning, amending ordinance number forty-two oh eight by amending the healthy places future land use element, by amending the economic development element, providing for comprehensive plan transmittal, providing for severability, providing for certification of consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict and providing for an effective date. This has been a first public hearing and first reading by title only for ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-five by Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item P three, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-five's, public hearing and first reading. Public hearing is being opened officially and first reading, and I am turning it over to Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with me today are Nushin Rahman with, uh, Ford Pinellas, as well as Amanda Chernobyl with Renaissance for me to give an overview of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's good to see you again. I was here a couple of weeks ago, probably making you drink through a fire hose a little bit. So my name is Nushin Rahman. I am a principal planner at Ford Pinellas. And today, we are here to present to you the proposed changes, um, that are in front of you for adoption in your land development code and comprehensive plan, providing opportunities and incentives for target employment uses in your city. I don't know if the clicker is working, you might have to click meeting. So I won't go over the entire history that we kind of gave you when we were here a couple of weeks ago, but just to remind you that what we are, um, proposing to you today for adoption are countywide policies that you are considering, um, at your local city level. Originally, our Target Employment Industrial Land Study was adopted in two thousand and eight, but we updated those policies to be more flexible and innovative in providing for economic opportunities. Um, and today, those are those, the changes in front of you. Next slide, please. Um, so, so really get our bearings, we'll start off with this map of your current zoning in Pinellas Park, which highlights, um, in gray and blue, the heavy industrial and light industrial areas. And in this presentation, you will see how the proposed policies, um, for target employment uses line up nicely with, um, the areas that are already zoned for these uses. So with the updated target employment, um, policies through the T E L S update, um, this is what the target employment areas in your city looks like. Um, and going on to the next slide, when you put the zoning map and the proposed target employment center boundaries side by side, you can see that this matches up very nicely, um, with the areas in your city that are zoned for industrial uses, both light and heavy. So what is the purpose of this? The purpose is to provide competitive incentives for target employment. Um, later on, Amanda's going to go over in a little more detail, um, of the changes that are proposed, but all of these changes are just options, um, for target employers and business owners to use, um, in your land development code. And how are these incentives provided, um, is something I'll explain next. Um, but to better explain this, I first need to take a step back and kind of give a refresher on the countywide rules that we have, um, at Ford Pinellas. So the countywide rules are policies that basically, um, are intended to provide some consistency in land use planning in Pinellas County so that all twenty-four of our local governments are not planning in completely different ways. And essentially, it provides a ceiling for development potential, including uses, um, densities and intensities. And our local governments always have the option of adopting more restrictive development potential standards. Um, we just like to give our local governments options, um, to meet their, meet the character of the city that, um, you are striving for. So essentially, the Target Employment Industrial Land Study led to policies that were adopted in the countywide rules, um, which are essentially vetted regulations for you all to cater to your city, um, which are the regulations that we'll go over in more detail later on. But the target employment areas that are identified in Pinellas Park translate to these subcategories. The first being suburban industrial, um, and this category is most appropriate for those industrial uses that require, um, a larger building footprint and separation between buildings. This subcategory also focuses on the preservation of industrial uses, which is incredibly important to your local economy. Um, a good example is where we are today in the Gateway Central area, as well as, um, Hercules Industrial Park in Clearwater. Um, and you'll see that the identified target employment clusters, which are just a fancy word for the business types, um, are really reflective of the industrial and manufacturing uses that might be typical in Pinellas Park. Um, moving on to the suburban office category, this, um, category is most appropriate for campus-style office development and has, um, could potentially have a mix of vertical or horizontal uses. Um, and you'll see, um, here that this category also has opportunity for integrating Class A office space. So these are those types of office spaces that attract target employers. And when we talk about target employers, they are those employers that pay high wages, but in addition, their business type also imports revenue to our county, um, bolstering our, a local economy. Um, these areas also have the most opportunity for public realm improvements to create more of a sense of place, to create more of a destination. Because currently, in their existing state, they might be scattered areas of redevelopment, often with large or underutilized parking lots, um, which have that opportunity for infill development. A good example of that is Bay Vista Office Park in the city of Largo. And we are actually working with the city of Largo at the same time to adopt these similar regulations. Um, so your neighbors are working on this as well. Um, moving on to the next slide, um, I'm going to hand it over to Amanda to go over some of those regulations in more detail.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So last time, we spoke a couple of weeks ago, like Nushin said, I think, you know, we had, we were very rushed and constrained on time. So I'm hoping, um, tonight, we'll be able to spend a little bit more time on the land development code and, and talking through some of the comprehensive plan amendments. But yes, like Nushin said, um, she set me up really well to kind of go over these two items. And again, both of these items, um, have been reviewed by our Renaissance team. We are a consultant on behalf of Ford Pinellas, um, just to make sure that, you know, we're looking at ways that we can align employment goals and modernize the existing regulations and making sure that we're providing an environment that supports redevelopment and not just new development. So, uh, again, just a refresher, so think of an overlay, we keep saying the word overlay, but just to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, think of an overlay as the icing on a two-layer cake. So it's part of it, but it's still separate. So the zoning overlay is a special set of rules that is specifically applied to a certain area. So like Nushin showed you, those different T E C areas, um, within the city. And these do not replace the base zoning, so that's sort of that second layer underneath, but work towards guiding the development in those areas. Um, and then, again, these are, um, you know, property owners within the T E C overlay that's being proposed can choose to develop under the T E C standards or under the existing standards. So again, just emphasizing that this is an optional, um, overlay. Okay, so just some key takeaways. Um, we'll get into a little bit more detail on all of these in a second here. But really, the key takeaway is, um, if property owners wanna take advantage of the T E C overlay standards, they have to at least have forty percent of the first floor area dedicated to target employment uses. Um, keyword, target employment uses. Um, so that forty percent excludes loading, mechanical and parking areas and really focuses on, uh, employment generating activities. Um, and so basically, this overlay allows for the qualification of density and intensity bonuses in underlying zoning districts and additionally offers some other incentives, like parking flexibility, um, and, and a couple, um, of height flexibility through preliminary sites. Um, so the T E C overlay, again, only applies to target employment uses. Um, so you can see an example here off to the right. So this is just an example of the target industry for medical technology, life and marine sciences, and sort of some of the, um, NEX codes that go along and fall under that. So you'll see anything from electromedical manufacturing to optical instruments and pharmaceutical. Um, so again, there's all of these different target employment industries that Pinellas County has identified, your city has identified. And again, this is targeted at those specific industries. So we're not just bringing in sort of a mishmash of industries. It's really the high... sort of a mishmash of industries. It's really the high-paying, high-wage industries that we're trying to get to the community. And then, to reiterate, so no certificate of occupancy would be issued for non-target employment uses on a site until the required 40% is met. And so some of the benefits, as we mentioned, this overlay is voluntary. It's an incentive base for those that are within these TEC areas. And so it doesn't, there's no new fees, there's no new specific requirements, but it gives developers more flexibility in their building and helps entice bringing in, creating those environments for job-generating uses within the city. It also aligns with the city and the region's goal to grow in a more balanced way. So this helps you direct growth into certain areas of the city along key corridors and is a, you know, a way to increase quality of life and provide some more housing options while attracting specific industries. So to make our vision realistic, we engaged with a targeted mix of industrial, residential, and mixed-use developers through an online survey. So through this, we were able to gather input from various engineers, developers, attorneys, real estate professionals, basically any of that, anybody that's sort of in this realm of redevelopment, Class A office space, industrial spaces. And so we engaged with the Pinellas Park Chamber Economic Development Committee, as well as the Pinellas County Economic Development Business Analyst, and this was shared with members and businesses located within the gateway area of Pinellas Park. So through that survey, nearly half of the respondents stated that they were likely or very likely to pursue these development incentives within the TEC, but stated items like parking, site constraints, and regulations would play a role in their decision. So really, the participants emphasized, again, they wanted a flexibility of regulations for this to be realistic, just coordination with different infrastructure improvements happening in the city that might drive them to, you know, develop in these certain areas, and really just, they support the diversity of employment types that we're trying to bring to the city. And then, just talking through them, they really do want to stay engaged with this effort, you know, should this move forward. And so really, just continuing engagement with the developers to fine-tune this TEC overlay. So we talked about incentives like density, intensity, some height flexibility. So really, there's some modest increases in residential units per acres, but only in zoning districts that already allow residential. There's increased FAR, which is floor area ratio. So for example, in M1 zoning, so light industrial, it's going from 0.55 to 1.1. But again, you're hearing increases, but just as a note, city council review would be required for any parcels that are adjacent to residential zones. So don't feel like, you know, developers are just having the heyday and can do whatever they want. This is, anything that's next to residential will still need to go through approvals. This also allows for slightly higher impervious surface ratios in some districts, and there are some places, such as in B1 general commercial, where there are proposed height increases. So for example, from 50 to 60 feet, so basically one story. And then, for example, from 40 to 60 feet in a residential R6 area. And again, this is all to make this more realistic for developers based on our conversations with them, based on the feedback we got from the survey. So with the parking flexibility, we understand that there might be some site constraints, again, various different parking spaces within the area and trying to meet those requirements. So this TEC does allow for a reduction in the number of parking spaces by up to 20%, but that is only allowable through a formal parking demand study or a less formal parking utilization survey. So again, they have to sort of justify that, you know, this is, you know, kind of what's happening now, and just making sure there's no adverse impact if that parking reduction were to take place. Additionally, this also proposes the use of compact parking stalls for certain target employment uses, up to 10%. So again, just, again, allowing more flexibility and understanding that, you know, not all sorts of target employment industries might need sort of the standard parking sizes. And again, all of this is accompanied through the preliminary site plan. So approval procedures, I briefly mentioned it, but so all projects that, you know, developers that want to take advantage of the TEC overlay, they have, they are required to submit a preliminary site plan, and this goes through the Planning and Development Service Director at your city. So you can either, this can either be approved if it's less than 50% of the floor area bonus density requested, or approved with required notice if it's more than 50%, and then deny or approve with conditions in which the applicant may appeal to City Council. So really, again, there's this development review process set in place for anybody that wants to take advantage of this TEC overlay so that the city can still maintain their ability to direct and guide growth within the city. So again, we briefly mentioned some of the two TEC overlays, that areas that we are proposing for this within the city of Pinellas Park. So that's the suburban office, which is catered, again, towards more Class A-type office space, and then the suburban industrial, which again, is to preserve industrial uses. And so the key word there is to preserve. So once, you know, sort of industrial or manufacturing land uses are gone, again, it's very hard to sort of come back from that. And so we really want to make sure that those places that are generating employment for your city can be preserved. And so you'll see underneath each of these different suburban office and suburban industrial, there's the different types of targeted employment industries that are sort of, that fall underneath there. So this is anything from business services, financial services, marketing design and publishing for the more office-type places. And then, in the suburban industrial, you have more of the medical technologies, like I mentioned earlier, but this also includes microelectronics manufacturing, aviation, aerospace, and defense. So when it comes to base zoning, again, there are the zoning types associated with each of these two TECs. So you can see here that there's a little bit of overlap currently in the zoning. So for example, light industrial, so that's M1, falls under both of the TECs. But otherwise, the suburban office is kind of, again, those more office, residential. You do have preservation in, under that one. And then, in the more industrial areas, that's where we have the heavy industrial, heavy commercial, general commercial, and industrial PUDs. And so the example, for example, in the suburban industrial for like heavy industrial, so that is anything ranging from breweries to advanced electronics manufacturing, that all sort of falls under that heavy industrial. So the used tables in the land development code were updated and simplified to remove redundancies and align with the M1 and IH, so light and heavy industrial regulations with the new TEC overlay incentives. And so again, amendments to Chapter 18, but also introduces Article 19, which is the overlay district. And so within that, it includes the purpose, intent, and scope of the TEC overlay, the composition of them, and permitted uses. So again, just to reiterate, you know, City Council would be reviewing any site plans in either of, you know, M1 or IH if they're adjacent to residential as far as permitted uses, just to minimize any quality-of-life concerns next to residential areas. It includes the, yeah, you're good, let me click it. It includes the maximum development potential and incentives, and as the procedures for developers if they want to proceed with this. So with the comprehensive plan amendment, we also added supportive language, especially in the future land use element, that includes emphasizing TECs as areas of future commercial and economic activity, and really emphasizing that the overlay is an implementation strategy. So it's to encourage redevelopment, not just new development, like I mentioned earlier, and it allows for the missing middle housing so that people working in the community can also afford to live here. And it also aims to increase the number of businesses in the city within these targeted industries, which usually equate to higher, good-paying jobs. And so some of the TEC updates have already been included. So for example, the max floor area ratio allowances have been included. I know it's a little bit difficult to see here, but hopefully on your printed versions, you can see it a little bit better. But basically, what the TEC overlay is doing is sort of giving you that middle ground between what is currently allowed and basically what is allowed by the Live Local Act. So it's giving you a little bit more flexibility, whereas the Live Local Act is sort of on the high end for dwelling units. This TEC overlay is coming in in sort of the middle range there. So again, gives your city more flexibility on how you want to guide growth. It gives developers flexibility on kind of which requirements they want to meet, depending on what they're trying to do with a site. Additionally, you'll see this amendment also updates allowable max dwelling units per acre, like I mentioned, and overlapping future land increases max ISR, which is impervious surface area for some future land uses. So today is the first City Council reading on this. This is going through a tier-two amendment process with the county. So Ford Pinellas has this on their board meeting agenda for October 8. And then, tentatively, this would be going to second City Council reading to you all on October 23. So we, I have myself and Nushin here, as well as city staff, so we're happy to take any questions.
City Council, I have any questions? I'm going to ask a question.
Yep.
With the employment center opportunities, how often has Forward Pinellas lobbied to Tallahassee to not allow residential apartments in places where we're trying to give people jobs and high-paying jobs? Because we just lost a lot of acres of it.
Thanks, Madam Mayor Bradbury. For clarification and legal purposes, at Ford Pinellas, we are not allowed to lobby. So, but I understand the intent of your question. We are, the way I can answer your question is by saying that these kinds of policies that we are presenting to you, they are with the Live Local Act in mind and meant to provide more lucrative incentives compared to the Live Local Act. So what Amanda spoke about was that the densities and intensities that are provided as the bonus here are kind of that middle ground. But a key distinction between these policies and the Live Local Act is that with the Live Local Act, they could all just be residential. But with these target employment center policies, you have to have a certain amount of target employment uses that are met first, and then you have the residential density. So while we are not allowed to lobby, we are allowed to think of more innovative policies that we can allow locally.
And you guys share those with our representatives?
We, our executive-
Not just City Council. Do you share them with everybody who represents Pinellas County?
Yes. Our executive director with Blanton often meets with the representatives and educates them on these topics. And, you know, with a lot of our legislative activity, what we can do is deliver the messages of the unintended consequences of some of these, of some of the legislation that's been adopted. So we do our best to do that, and in addition to working on the local level with you all.
Any questions? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on item P3? Seeing none. I am closing. Item P3, ordinance number 2025-25, public hearing and first reading. And entertaining a motion by City Council. Councilmember Butler.
What item are we on? Is this P3? Sorry.
Yeah.
It's been a long day.
Yeah.
Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance number 2025-25, first public hearing and first reading.
Second motion.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor hit your buttons, or nay, hit your buttons. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance number P4, ordinance number 2025-24.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item P4, ordinance number 2025-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Land Development Code to add regulations for city overlays by amending Section 18-1502.2 definitions, amending Table 18-1524.3, authorized uses in the M1 district, amending Table 18-1525.3, authorized uses in the IH district, amending Section 18-1535.1 applicability, adding a new Article 19 overlay districts, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a first public hearing and first reading for ordinance number 2025-24, read by title only. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P4, ordinance number 2025-24, first public hearing and first reading. I am turning this over to Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Danielle Stewart. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager for the city, and I'd like to enter into the record the presentation from the previous item for this one.
Thank you. City Council, thought of any questions that they might want to ask? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing at its first reading and entertain a motion by City Council. Councilmember Seville.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pass ordinance number 2025-24, public hear, first public hearing and first reading.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Or nay? Thank you. Item P5, ordinance number 2025-21.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item P5, ordinance number 2025-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending Section 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11 of ordinance number 4272, an appropriation and tax levy ordinance of the City of Pinellas Park, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This has been a reading of ordinance number 2025-21 by title only on second and final reading. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P5, ordinance number 2025-21, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing, turning it over to Dan Cassianas. We're going to get a hear from this side of the room.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our second, hopefully, our final budget amendment for this year. And what we're trying to accomplish with the amendment is we're budgeting funds for the expenses associated with Hurricanes Lane and Milton of $5,995,667. And in addition, in the capital improvement fund, we're bringing forward from last fiscal year, items that were not done but are being completed this year, to the tune of $6,688,810, and funding new projects in the amount of $8,882,440. These projects were previously approved by council. As a result of these changes, the total city budget will increase by $24,863,876, which will give us a revised grand total, including CIP, water, and sewer, and everything else. For this year, $296,73,938. If anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. City Council, have any questions of Dan? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing at its second and final reading and entertain a motion by City Council. Councilmember Kadav, Vice Mayor Kadav.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we pass ordinance 2023-21, public hearing, second and final reading.
Second.
I understand it should be 2025-21.
Second concur.
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor, or nay, or what have you, please cast your ballots.
Motion, Madam Mayor, is being announced.
Thank you. Now moving on to Section 4, Consent Agenda, item C1.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are 13 items on the consent agenda this evening. Item C1 is reappearance to the Pinellas County Sun Coast Transit Authority, PSTA Board of Directors. The reappearance is for Councilmember Patty Reed to represent the City of Pinellas Park on the PS, on the Pinellas- on the PS, on the Pinellas County Sun Coast Transit Authority Board of Directors for a term from October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2028. Item C2 is authorization for the city of Pinellas Park to accept a utility easement from St. Mary 18-21 Condom Minium Association, Inc. for the property located at the parcel ID 16301677984001. The item C3 is authorization for the city of Pinellas Park to accept a utility easement from St. Mary 18-21 Condom Minium Association, Inc. for the property located at parcel ID Item C4 is authorization for the city of Pinellas Park to accept a utility easement from St. Mary 18-21 Condom Minium Association, Inc. for the property located parcel ID 16301677984001. Item C5 is authorization for the mayor to sign a plat on behalf of the city of Pinellas Park for the property generally located at 7690 59th Street North. Item C6 is release of the unity of title for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Barclay Industrial Park, which was recorded in the official records book 14229, or 229, and pages 854 through 856. Item C7 is ordinance number 2025-26. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pinellas Park, water, reclaimed water, sewers, and other utilities by amending Section 10-102 definitions to include new definition for capital recovery fee, amending Section 10-106 utility service connection charges to be renamed as capital recovery fees, amending Section 10-118 to replace the term connection charges with capital recovery fees, amending Section 10-121 to clarify interest rate accruing on deposits, creating a new Section 10-128 titled sanitary sewer meters installation required violations, and renumbering former Section 10-128 to 10-130, creating a new Section 10-129 titled sanitary sewer meters inspection, defective meters, estimated wastewater access for readings, and renumbering former Section 10-129 to 10-131, renumbering former Sections 10-130 through 10-133 to new Sections 10-132 through 10-135, providing for codification of the Code of Ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading prior to public hearing by title only, Madam Mayor. Item C8 is ordinance number 2025-27, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida pertaining to the operation of the potable water reclaim water and sanitary sewer utility systems, adopting potable water reclaim water and sanitary sewer utility rates, utility connection charges, capital recovery fees, and deposits, and deposits previously established by ordinance 4270, amending charges pertaining to potable and reclaimed water connection charges, potable water backflow prevented charges, additional potable and reclaimed water fees, and capital recovery fees, providing for appeal of ordinance number 4270, providing for appeal of all other ordinances or parts of ordinances conflicting herewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading prior to public hearing, read by title only, Madam Mayor. Item C9, Resolution Number 2025-09, a resolution of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, adopting a three-year agreement between the city of Pinellas Park, Florida, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 762, which agreement is for the period October 1, 2025 through September 30, 202028, providing for an effective date. This is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 2025-09. Item C10 is an authorization for donation of clear water for youth. The authorization is for a donation in the amount of $18,000 for a college scholarship and water safety program. The amount will be taken from the confiscated property fund operating account number. Item C11 is the authorization for approval of final payment under bid 24.009 PAC and library window and door replacement. This action is recommended so that the final payment can be processed with the final payment for this contract at an estimated $12,533.40. And item C12 is authorization for approval of the final payment under bid 24.008, bocce ball courts at the mayor's park at Freedom Lake with Evolution Contracting LLC. This is authorization for approval and acceptance of final payment for bid 24.008 in the amount of $74,800. And item C13 is an award of bid ITB 25.012 Park Station Conversion Rycon Construction, Inc. The authorization is to award this bid to Rycon Construction, Inc., to be charged the appropriate account with the amount, the amount budget for this project presently at $8 million. And that concludes item C1 through C13 on the consent agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Bradbury. Regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate, item C1 through C13, inclusive with item C7 and C8 being first reading prior to public hearing, and item C9 being first and final reading. The next public hearing will be held in council chambers on Thursday, September the 11th, 2025, at 16:00.
Second motion.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion by city council on item C1 through 13? Anybody in the audience that has any questions on item C1 through 13? Seeing none. All those in favor by voice?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to happenings in our community. Vice Mayor Tim, got anything for us tonight?
I would just, I would just like to say that the city put on a wonderful event on Tuesday night for our city volunteers. I bring that up because we need city volunteers. Maybe if they know that they had such a great event, they'll think about it. It really was, it was held over at the pack, and, and we had, we had a special appearance from Elvis at the event, which--
I've seen another Elvis before.
It brought back some old memories, but it was, it was a great event. Want to thank the staff for the hard work they put in putting that together because I know it's a lot of work.
Yes. Mr. Ricky.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, ditto on what Tim said, except the horse race was rigged. Other than that, it was great. I really appreciate that team and everything they do to celebrate our volunteers. Just a reminder for everybody, hurricane season has been going on. We are getting to that spicy part of hurricane season where things get busier, so just make sure everybody has their stuff together, they're prepared. Man, last, last time I talked about we're losing some people, and we lost more great people in our community. Ron Miller passed away, former finance director. Also Everett DeWitt, Kelly Hayward's dad, Chief Hayward's father-in-law, really great guy, shining light everywhere he went. Corinne Warbet, a lot of those guys left, and just a really, really great guy. So thoughts and prayers with all those folks impacted, and just appreciate the opportunity to share time and space with those folks.
Yes. Yes.
I got nothing. I don't know. Everybody except for I want the horse race.
Well, I think that you have more experience than Ricky does on, with the horses.
I spend a lot of time on a damn rocking horse, okay? I don't want to hear it.
I don't know, it might have been rigged Ricky.
I--
Last time we had to unplug yours before you got bucked off.
Anything from you, Mr. Sibyl?
Yes, I'd just like to agree with everything council has said on the event the other night. I do believe, I do believe the race was rigged though. And, and really, we've got a bunch of great employees, but, you know, really, when things happen in our community that our police and fire have to respond to, I don't know how they go home and sleep at night. I don't know how they could sleep for days. So my, my prayers and my thoughts are with you, with your people for what they have to deal with every day. I mean, that's got to be very hard. I mean, we've got great employees throughout the city, but most of them don't have to deal with what police and fire have to deal with. And today is a special event. Take a minute here. If y'all could agree with me and wish Mr. Dan Hubbard a happy birthday, we could all sing to him.
Wow.
What do you got, Dan? What do you got, brother?
This has been an amazing couple days. So many people have wished me well that just, I don't feel as though I deserve it, but thank you very much. Turning 60 is scary but exciting at the same time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You gotta make a wish, man.
Making the fire chief nervous, blow it out.
Yeah.
I was afraid the chief was gonna have me arrested by Adam, but thank you, chief.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday and many more.
Oh, thank you.
Do we have anything from city clerk's office? Saf? Oh, there we go.
I have a couple things to share. Good evening, everybody. This weekend is a holiday weekend, so on Monday, September 1st, all city facilities and the brush site are going to be closed for Labor Day. The Performing Arts Center Season Tribute Show tickets are on sale on September 2nd, which is next Tuesday. Those are for sale at the box office. You can get them on, online or by attending. The Good Neighborhood Food Giveaway is happening at the Pinellas Park Senior Center on Tuesday, September 9th at 1 o'clock PM. On September 10th, the next day, at the senior center is the Pancake Breakfast from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And mark your calendars for September 13th. It's going to be a cleanup day around town from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaSharon?
I just wanted to say that as someone that goes out into the school system and mentor to the kids that we all continue to keep the kids in prayer, it's just a lot going on, and we just need to be able to cover and protect the kids each and every day.
Please, chiefs, new chief? You have nothing?
I have a perfect choice of the family of the rich guys. I'm pretty sure you have. You end up like your neighbor over there.
Well, one thing I'll say, we just voted for the bocce ball over at Freedom Lake. I'm sure Ricky's been around some of the mainlanders. They are so excited about the bocce ball, so excited. They've actually challenged Ricky, they've challenged me to come out and play bocce ball with them.
I'm not a player, so that's why they challenged me.
So you have made some citizens very happy with adding the bocce ball to the park. And as Ricky says, we have lost some of our anchor people in our community, and families need to know that our hearts are with them. We hope that everybody has a blessed couple of weeks until we see you again. The meeting is adjourned. Question for you really quick.